have been in our sanctuary or social hall, but we've had them all. So I'd like every one of our staff to please stand up because it's because of these people that we've been able to continue. Thank you so much, each and every one of you. Yeoman's job, working around the clock, hours and hours, thinking at night what needs to be done next. Amazing, amazing job. So what I'm up here for, announcements of course, is, yes, announcements. So this weekend, we have a fun-filled weekend. It's Purim. Don your green? For our Purim spiel tomorrow night, 6:30 in the rotunda, is that correct? In the rotunda. Wear a jacket, okay. Bring your shamrocks. We also have the Purim carnival on Sunday morning. So come one, come all. I understand there's delicious shaman tashin that have been baked and lots of fun to be had by all. We do need a little bit of help though on Sunday morning. Mitzvah meals is in need of some volunteers for both shifts, both morning shifts. So if you're available, please sign up online, we could use your help. And we have some really cool stuff coming up. We have adult education, we have Todd Krieger, the long, hot Jewish relationship class. So that's, next week is our next installment of that class. I'm not exactly sure where that's going to be held.
Everything, when you come into the school building, there is a whiteboard that Marla updates with all of the rooms. So just walk in the door, we'll tell you where to go.
Awesome. Awesome.
Move on quickly, go.
Okay. Okay, so I read in our bulletin that we've got a hiking group going on and that they're trying to figure out what they want to do. So they're starting this Saturday, April 5th, not this Saturday, but on April 5th, there is a hike up in the Laguna Canyon Wilderness Park. And they're gonna, we're gonna share a meal together, hike together, and then really get going on establishing this group on a regular basis. And if you haven't put it on your calendar, May 3rd, our annual fundraiser. Again, we haven't missed a beat, we're still gonna do the fundraiser, it's gonna be in our rotunda. That should be an interesting thing. This is gonna be awesome. It's gonna be really awesome. And if you're interested in hosting a reservations-only event, please see our, our people that are running the fundraiser, and in particular Kevin Glazer, is organizing reservations-only. We would love to have more events, they have been very, very popular, and really a great way for the community to bond. So with that, I wish you all a Shabbat Shalom.
Thank you. And just go ahead and, you want to stay here? Oh, okay. Suzy, you want to come up too?
Cool. So give me a second, because I gotta get technical here. Get everything plugged in. So talk amongst yourselves, the theme is Purim. Best jokes ever, go for it. Oh, that's why. Kanter? Also, while you're waiting, if you wouldn't mind collecting the prayer books, have them go out to the sides and we can collect them and put them back, that would be wonderful.
Kanter? Oh wait, oh, Suzy, will you do me a favor?
Yeah.
What I want to do is, I just want to have you hold this right here, because I want to make sure I get it set up first. Just push it in. No, no, don't push it, you're gonna hold, just hold, no, hold this thing. There you go. Thanks. Okay. Because I just want to get it before they can see everything up there.
Just put it on that first slide.
Right, but what I'm trying to do though, is I'm trying to get it so it actually has our notes.
Oh, okay.
Because it's not showing it right now.
Oh, I see, you were looking for the dual screen.
Yeah. I don't know where it is.
It's on.
It's on, okay, so yeah, just keep it right there for a second.
Maybe under slideshow, see if there's a mode that we can...
A presenter view, perfect. There we go. Yay! All right. That's okay, actually if you put it up, it might go up. Uh, yeah, go ahead and come on up. Uh-oh, where'd it go? Give me a second, wait. Okay, perfect. Oh wait, there it is, okay, it's coming. All right, I just gotta plug in this. There we go. Uh-huh. Beautiful, thank you. Whoa, no, that's not what I want. Hang on. There we go, all right.
Shabbat Shalom to everybody once again. So good, so good to have everybody here. So first of all, I want to start off with some thank yous, because really what, what we have all been through over this past month, we really were, are not able to put one foot in front of the other without each other. And so again, I want to thank President Goodman and Kay and the entire LDS community here for opening their arms to all of us and to welcoming us and allowing us to make our home here. So thank you once again, President Goodman and everybody here. I want to thank Elaine Schwartz, who this evening, the PowerPoint that you're gonna be seeing, she helped compile all this, all of us have been putting together all of this material over this time, but she's helping us organize our thoughts. And it's really wonderful to have somebody who is there to keep us all totally and completely organized. Of course, Suzy Amster, who truly has been a rock through this. This woman has more knowledge in her brain about names, places, dates, insurance policies, numbers, people, you name it, you just have to follow her around and take quick notes, which has been done. And it's, she's been absolutely remarkable through all of this and keeping us all together. They're not able to be here with us yet, definitely. Linda and Danny Weisberg are unable to be with us tonight, they are our co-chairs for our Living Legacy, the construction committee, what's called the Core Committee. They also serve on other parts of our Living Legacy project. They too have been giving, actually everybody who I'm on the list have given so many hours, so I'm grateful to them. To Jeff Winston, who is our Chair of our Living Legacy project, all of the time that he's been putting into this. Bernie Horowitz, who along with Linda, is our, they are our co-chairs for our capital campaign, with really pushing us to move forward in raising the funds that we already have collected for Living Legacy and raising the funds that we are going to need to raise together in order to bring ourselves whole once again. To Jeff Murco and Warren Henigan, who are also part of our Living Legacy campaign, thank you so much. To Lynn Metasurin, the President of our congregation, who supports us and gives us direction and is truly an amazing right and left arm. And to Andrea Wasserman too, our Executive VP, for all of her strength and encouragement throughout these weeks behind us. Stuart Einbinder, thank you so much, he's from our Board of Directors, but in his, in his real life or his regular life, he is an insurance maven. And so grateful to him, he can interpret words of insurance, it's almost like interpreting Talmud. Definitely written in different languages. So thank you. Our staff is truly the, the heart and the soul of our congregation. And they keep everything flowing in and out and around, and the circulation system is incredible because each and every one of them. My clergy partner, Kanter David Reinwald, who just, his voice keeps singing in my head and keeps me moving forward, and all of us in that wonderful music, but also that wonderful pastoral strength that he gives to us. Of course, to Suzy, as I mentioned earlier, Pam Ranta from our Early Childhood Center, Elias Villegas with, you know, our maintenance and, oh my gosh, he and all of, all of the guys, we are moving them all over the place. They are going to keep very busy. To David Cohen, our Director of Congregational Learning, who had to be extremely flexible when one day we said, "We're having religious school in the park, this is gonna be awesome." "Oh, guess what, we've got power again, we're having religious school back at school, this is gonna be great," and he just went with it. Thank you so much. To Joel Weinthal, who has been answering your calls, receiving your voicemails, our phone system we know has been challenging, we're getting it back online, I think we're almost there, or maybe we are. Very close. But, you know, we had our voicemail going to a Google number, but then transcribed your voicemails, okay, so the transcription from a computer is quite hysterical, we thank you for the comedy. But at least we could listen to it too, so it was good. Sisterhood, I'll tell you later what one of them came out as, it was awesome for Purim, I'll leave it at that. To Marla Vatter, our office mom, who I share a desk with. You wonder where my office is, you know, Suzy's office is in her car. I kid you not, she spent a couple of weeks in her car because she could see all the traffic coming in and could see who was coming onto the campus. So, so she was in there, we're finally all in the school building together, and we're all sitting on top of each other. But it's wonderful, we all like each other. And so, so Marla, thank you for sharing your desk with me and keeping me sane, and we sing together, it's good. To Becca Grossberg, also with keeping our youth program going, Cindy Dubrow, who I saw, she came in earlier, she also with Pam Ranta, we're going back and forth with our Early Childhood Center, I mean, the work that they did together to keep everything going and to make sure that especially that week when we did not have power, they were, they were able to get placement for all of the kids during that week. So nobody missed a beat. So that was truly wonderful. Pam Uber, who is our bookkeeper, is keeping all the numbers straight, again, another lesson in Talmud. To, to our guys who, you know, you are all so amazing, to Octavio, to Fabian, to Nelson and Angel, they are truly wonderful, and like I said, they are moving in all sorts of different places. So when we have to bring things from the temple, we bring it over here, we go to other places, we have a meshkan in the backs of our cars and trucks, the traveling tabernacle. And I'm grateful, very grateful to them. And to our newest staff member, returning staff member, a voice that you all recall, to Renee Symbita, we're glad to have you back, thank you. So, I think I got everybody, I wrote them down just to make sure. Oh. Thank you. I'm not. I consider this time Shloshim. It has been almost a month, we're coming up on that. It will be four weeks ago tomorrow morning, that a fire began in our home. So Shloshim is that 30 days, those 30 days there, and it is that time in which we end that formal period of mourning, Shana, that first week, and then Shloshim, that first month. So we are concluding our Shloshim. Now, what does that mean in Jewish tradition? It means that, see during Shloshim, you're not supposed to go and have celebrations, you're not supposed to go and get your hair cut, you're not supposed to go, there's all sorts of different rules that go with Shloshim. But I'm thankful that we did, we did celebrate during Shloshim. We had two b'nai mitzvah, Jacob Silberfarb last week, and also Adam Florman a couple weeks ago, became b'nai mitzvah. We still celebrated together, we celebrate new life, but we also, we recognize that we mourn, we mourn the loss of a building. Now you might think that a building, a building isn't something that's living. A building truly is living. It's living because we are all living in it. We are all a part of it, we breathe the soul into it. And we have been mourning the fact that we are not able to be in that space. But we carry that soul with us, we carry that soul here, into this place, into every place we are. So we are concluding Shloshim. And from Shloshim, we move forward, and we rebuild. We don't forget, we remember. We recognize that there will be the firsts that we will not have in our building, we will not have Pesach this year in our building, we will not have the High Holidays in our sanctuary, we will have them here, it opens up behind you. But you know, we still mourn that, we mourn that loss, but there is hope. And that hope is that we're all together. And together, we're going to rebuild, and together, we're going to celebrate, and together, we'll get back into that building. So tonight, we're going to share with you some of the things that have been going on even since the FAQs that came out. We're gonna give each of us an opportunity to be able to share, ask questions, we have paper and pencils, so, yeah, that Marla has, so if you want, we can pass those around in a little bit, and you can, can take those for those of you who don't want to ask them, you're more than welcome to get up and ask them. I'm gonna ask though that you wait until we concluded the whole presentation, and then we'll take questions. But we'll join together in this journey and being able to ask and see how we rebuild together. I also want to truly acknowledge the amazing gifts of my board, our board, the Temple Beth Shalom Board. They are remarkable, they have also been there, they have come in for extra meetings, they have been there, allowing us to bounce ideas off of one another, allowing us to move forward. To Sisterhood and Brotherhood, we thank you as well, because you're there as a part of our journey as well. And so together, allow us come to the conclusion of our Shloshim, and let us talk about where we are going as one family.
Good evening. So happy to see you all here on this Shabbat. We thought that it was important to share with all of you the journey that we have been on for the last four weeks. And while it feels like it was just yesterday, it also feels like it was forever ago, and it's really hard to reconcile that timeframe. But one of the things that I heard the most often from our congregants was about the fire, and it was only in the kitchen. And so how come we're out of our building? Because we know that the kitchen was burned, but what about the rest? So we wanted to take an opportunity this evening to share with you about the whole story, the whole picture, for those of you who have not been back in the building since the fire. And I want to give you some background about how it started and the steps that we've taken over these last four weeks. So before I do that though, and as you graciously acknowledged, while Rabbi was thanking everyone else, we do indeed need to once again thank her, because she has been tireless, as well as there has been Matt, in keeping us going. Matt's been doing a lot of the work with all of our technology, and we thank you both, and to your children who have had to do without you so long this last four weeks, thank you so much. So what happened? On Saturday, the 15th of February, a fire broke out in our kitchen. It was around 6 o'clock in the morning, and as we had hoped, the alarm went off. That's why you have a fire alarm. It notified the security company, and the security company contacted, the first person in there is supposed to contact, and that's Elias. So Elias was in Texas for his daughter's wedding, I'll talk to you on the wedding. And he got the call, and immediately called Suzy. And I don't know if he woke you up or not, you probably awake that early in the morning, but... One of the mornings you could sleep, but you didn't. And Suzy made some phone calls, and Joel Weinthal, who lives close to the temple, was one of the first ones on the scene. And I have to tell you, it was a mess. There were fire trucks and ambulances, and you'd be shocked how many construction people and vendors follow the fire trucks, you know, just like ambulance chasers. They follow the fire trucks right into the parking lot and park there for hours and hours, trying to determine who's in charge. And when they see someone talking and pointing and directing others, then they come right up to you and hand you their business card and try and introduce themselves. And it's very confusing, because you don't know who the insurance company has sent your way, and who was just a vendor who pulled in after the fire trucks. But Suzy did a wonderful job of intervening and keeping us all straight with who was who and who was supposed to be there. So the fire alarm went off, the fire department responded quickly, and the kitchen was fully engulfed in the flames. What we've been told is that the flames burned for about an hour, and thank goodness that the people who constructed our building did it with great wisdom and stuck to the codes that are required for the city of Santa Ana. Because we had a 60-minute fire door on our kitchen, the fire did not spread to the social hall. And at the end of that 60-minute time, when they got the fire out, if you, you know, you guys know, from the kitchen to the social halls, that there's that little tiny foyer right there, and there's that entryway, and just above that, you could see it was black and it started to peel the wallpaper back. And that was where the fire had just started to leach out when they got it out. So I arrived on the scene a little after 8:00, and by that time, Matt Cohen had already removed the tourist scrolls from our ark, the fire men had let him in as soon as, as soon as it was safe to do, to do so. And the thing that I found the most shocking was, he had placed the scrolls in his car and he had all the windows down, but anytime you walked even near the car, all you could smell was smoke. They were already so full of smoke from just that short period of time that they were in there. And you can imagine, you know where the kitchen is, you know how far away the ark is, so that was pretty significant. So they got the fire out, and the cause of the fire was determined to be a freezer in our kitchen. Now that freezer is only two years old. So there was a freezer, it was almost new, and it malfunctioned, and we are certain that that was the cause of the fire. So along with the Orange County Fire Authority who responded and determined the cause of the fire, the FBI, as in the case in every time there's a church or synagogue fire, they dispatch someone from the FBI to come out, and ATF was there immediately to determine if it was accidental, or if it was a hate crime or a terrorist act. And right away, they were able to determine as well that it was a faulty freezer. And then there were other people that came out to look at it, you know, adjusters and insurance people, and everyone came to the same conclusion. So we are confident that it was indeed the freezer. And because it was 6 o'clock in the morning, thankfully, no one was on the premises, we are so thankful that there was no one that was hurt during the fire, and also thankful that the firefighters who responded, there was no one that was injured. As well, it was a little scary to drive in and see the ambulance there, and I spoke with Suzy, and we, you know, she confirmed for me that that's protocol just in case, and they didn't stay much longer after I arrived, and we were thankful that everyone was safe. So how extensive is the damage? Well, the structural damage to the kitchen, hopefully you've seen some of the photos, and the adjacent portions of the social hall and the roof had fire damage. But the smoke and water damage throughout the building just permeated. And I don't know about you, but I've never thankfully been involved in a structure fire like this. You know, my fire experience is with singing around the campfire and eating smores, you know. Having a fire in the fireplace. So it was actually quite shocking to me when I went into the building as soon as they allowed us in. We went into the building and the odor was unimaginable, it was so strong with smoke. And we saw the damage to the kitchen, and we knew that it would be a total loss, because it was all just black, it was nothing but ash. And we walked into the social hall, and it was so shocking, even, we didn't have any power, all right, so the power had been shut off, and the power controls were all damaged significantly, so we were without power. So we walked in, and it was a little dark, but you could easily see, just as we're seeing in here, that the social hall was black. It had smoke everywhere, it was so black. And when we looked up at the ceiling, we were so surprised to see that all the can lights like these, all the recessed lighting, all the plastic around the light bulbs were all melted. And there was a speaker in there, into our ceiling, for the sound system, and it was melted, and actually, some of the plastic had started to drip, and you could see it almost like an icicle dripping out of where it had melted. And as I looked around the room, I thought, well, good, there was no fire in here, just that little bit by the door, that's good, we can clean this up. And I thought, just like hopefully many of you are thinking, and why you keep asking the question about it was only in the kitchen, that, you know, you just, it's ash, you just, you know, clean it up, and, and you're gonna be good to go, and you're gonna be back in your building. So I walked over to an area where we store our bingo equipment, and I looked in there to see if the bingo equipment had been damaged, and everything looked good, it looked pretty clean. And I took my finger, and I went like this on one of the cash registers that was way in a nook and cranny in that closet, and it came out black. I was so surprised, because it didn't look black. And I thought, okay, so it's got ash on it. And I took my finger, and as we always do, I wiped it on my pants, thinking it would just come right off. And I looked, and it was still black. And I thought, wow, that didn't just come off. And so I went into the restroom, and the first thing that I noticed, you all know where the ladies' room is from the kitchen, it's all the way through the social hall and across. And I looked at the floor in the restroom, and it was black, the whole floor. And I could see where my footprints were leaving the mark. And I didn't want to walk all the way through, because this is still a crime scene at this time. And I kind of ducked down and looked all the way, ladies, you know, to the back handicap stall, all the way to the back furthest corner of that stall, the floor was black from the smoke. And it was very shocking to me. And I thought, all right, I'm gonna go the same, I'm gonna wash this schmutz off my finger, and I put some soap on, and I scrubbed, I couldn't get it off. And then I realized at that moment, this isn't gonna clean up with the, it's really damaged. And as we continued to walk through the building and take our fingers and touch things in the building, we realized that the smoke had permeated the entire building, from the furthest corner of the restrooms, to the furthest corner of the Rabbi's office, and of course, in our beloved sanctuary. And it became immediately obvious that the social hall was gonna be a total loss. And certainly it was. So, let's see, where we are? The space bar? So, all right, so we talked about the extent of the damage?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. So, again, the damage is significant, that's why we're not back in our building, it was indeed more than just the loss of the kitchen. And the other surprising piece to me is how intensive the heat was. And one of the first things that I wanted to do, I had spoken with Sarah Schweitz, and she was very concerned for her beloved gift shop, as you might expect, knowing... she was very concerned for her beloved gift shop, as you might expect, knowing Sarah and how much she cares for it. And I spoke to her on the phone, and I said, I'm going to go into the building, and I'm going to take a look at the gift shop. And nothing in there was burned, and we had hoped that, you know, we might be able to salvage it. But the smoke damage is just so intense, it's on everything. And when the restoration company came and they took some things out of the gift shop, we found that there were many items in there that had been melted. And it's behind the glass in the gift shop. And there were pieces of our ark that had been melted. And it's because the fire was so intensely hot as it burned for an hour. So that was quite shocking to discover. So at this point...
Yeah.
So, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I'm going to talk about this right here.
Okay. So I'm going to let Rabbi talk to you about the Torah scrolls.
So when we talk about the sanctuary, excuse me, as Lynn has already been sharing with you, you've got to just be able to kind of imagine the fact of how that smoke pushed through and the heat pushed through. So as Lynn mentioned earlier, our six Torah scrolls were removed as soon as we were allowed into the building. And as some of you had gone over, last Thursday, we had a sofa from Sofa On Sight. They are a registered sofa company with, who not only check Torah scrolls, but check very important Torah scrolls, namely the Czechoslovakian Torah scrolls, which we have one, which is our Holocaust scroll. And so Rabbi Moshe Druin happened to be in town last week. He came up from San Diego. He's from Florida. He came up and spent the entire day on Thursday going through all six of our Torah scrolls. It was remarkable. I have to tell you, I've never seen Torah scrolls handled the way that he handled them, handled them with complete and utter respect. But it was really amazing how he literally pulled the parchment and layered it one on top of the other, and went through each and every column and each and every scroll to check out how they were. Now, at this point, I thought, all right, we've got the mantles off of them, we have the wimples, the Torah binders off of them. Thank you, Marla and Marilyn. You two, the two of them made us some new binders very quickly because we needed to bind them together. They had been uncovered, so, you know, airing them out, and, you know, I'd go and smell them. They'd been in my house, by the way, since. So, you know, I would go downstairs, they're right there, I come down, I go, I smell, they smell okay. So I'm, all right, this is good, the Torah scrolls are going to be fine. And, you know, the silver, everything, you know, taking care of all those. My mother-in-law happened to be in town. She polished all of the silver that week. I love you, I love you, Mom. So they look great. But the sofa goes ahead and he evaluates the scrolls, and he says, Rabbi, come here. And he shows me the scrolls. Now, the scrolls have been damaged. They've been damaged from the smoke. One thing that you can see is where you have lines of Hebrew. It looks as if in some places, somebody took their finger over the words and just went like this, and then there's black in between the lines. Now, he says, I can fix this. And he says, watch. And he pulls up a rubber artist eraser, and he starts doing this, and I'm holding my breath going, "Ooh!" Because he's going over the letters. And he says, no, 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 Rabbi, it's okay. I know what I'm doing. Good. Glad to hear that. He was able to actually take off some of the smoke, and this is from T'rat Shalom. So T'rat Shalom, he went through, I explained to him how important T'rat Shalom is to us. This is the scroll that we wrote 10 years ago. He, I said, this one has to be kosher by the time the day ends. We've got two B'nai Mitzvahs, and I need this scroll koshered. No problem. So that one, he said, we're going to be fine. But the other scrolls, he then says, Rabbi, come look at this. On the tops of the scrolls, you see yellow. It's discoloration. That was from the intense heat and from the smoke. They all cannot be repaired. Some of our Torah scrolls are going to need to be replaced. And so we're working on how, what that plan is going to be. I'll let you know for sure that the Holocaust scroll, we went through that one, it's 250 years old. He was able to date it for me, because there's a certain way that they write a pay in there. It's called a spiral pay. We'll have a whole experience on that. But that's how he was able to date it, to 250 years ago Eastern Europe. It already has a lot of damage to it. There's some work that we're going to do in it, but it's priceless. That one, we take, you know, we take care of. The Sephardic scroll is going to need some restoration in it. I thought for sure that that one was the safest because it's in the hardcover. Unfortunately, you know, it's there, it's at, it's in, at Nitzavim in Deuteronomy, and where you open it right there, and sure enough, you can smell a little bit of smoke from that as well. But he's going to work on restoring it. So our Holocaust and Sephardic scrolls are being restored. Our Torah mantles, binders, they're attempting to go through restoration with those with our restoration company. Our ark sustained major damage. It's black. As Lynn pointed out earlier, it doesn't have, it doesn't have that same shine that it did. It was, you really, you notice it when you're there. And so that's going to need some major repair as well. And we're talking to museum curators because our arcs are a piece of artwork. They were done by a well-known artist, Joseph Young. And so, you know, we want to get those restored if at all possible. Our Shabbat and our High Holiday prayer books are unusable. I thought, maybe, just maybe, they were all the way in the very back, right, in that storage area. And even the prayer books to Filat Shalom that were in boxes, that were taped up underneath other boxes, around other boxes, I got one from the middle. I took it outside, I placed it outside, I stepped away, because anytime, especially during those first few days of the fire, anytime you were in the building, even for just a couple minutes, you came out smelling horrible. So I stepped away from the box, and there was a woman there who had not been inside. And I asked her, I said, please open the box, pull out a prayer book from the middle, don't take it from the top, and open it and tell me if you smell anything. She pulled out the prayer book, and sure enough, she could smell smoke. So all of our prayer books are unusable. Our High Holiday Mach Soreem are unusable. We are in the process right now, we've ordered Mishkan to Fila. They should be here sometime this week, and hopefully, we will be using them next Friday night during our services here. The union is coming out with a new High Holiday prayer book. We did the trial run with the Yom Kippur afternoon service, it's called Mishkan Hanafash. That book is not going to be ready for publication, it won't be out until High Holidays 2015. So we're not going to have it for this High Holidays, which means I need you to bring your High Holiday prayer books when you come for High Holiday services. You're going to need to share. I'm contacting rabbis from around the country who maybe like us, we switched out from the prayer books into gender-neutral prayer books, that if they have their non-gender-neutral, the ones that say Lord and He and so forth, to send them to us. So hopefully, we can have extras. But that's okay, we'll cozy up to each other, and we'll share books together. And then we'll have new High Holiday prayer books for the following year. My library back in my office, we're waiting to see if that's going to be able to be restored and see how those books all smell as well. Puppets, everything, I mean, my entire... So I got back Rabbi Pearl, I got back Sid, who's my newest puppet, they smell okay. They were happy to be home. Trust me. I took them out of the box immediately and started playing with them. The French-American School kids think I'm hysterical. Finally, our Ner Tamed, our eternal light. This was the amazing part. So the electricity was out. Walk into a darkened sanctuary, and there, the Ner Tamed is lit up. It was beautiful. It's solar-powered. That is an eternal light. So I was very happy that we had done that a number of years ago, when it was the blessing for the sun. And so that light's still shining. It's still shining in our sanctuary, even as all the restoration is going on. It's still attached to our solar panel, at least it was as of this morning. And I was, I've been explaining it to the construction crew who have been there, how important this is and how significant it is. So while the sanctuary was black, God did not leave us. God was surely present with us and still is.
Hello, everybody. This has been a challenging four weeks. I won't lie, it has been challenging every day, you know, to see our beloved temple in this condition. So I want to share some of the things and tell you where we are. Some of the slides that you're going to see are already not in, up to date, because every day it changes. And every day, you learn more and more. You know, I felt like I was much more of a generalist in the beginning. I knew a little bit about the insurance. I certainly, you know, have assisted in writing this policy every year, thank God, that it came out okay and that we are insured and all that when it's put to the test. But we find out that, you know, every day, things change, and you learn more and more about what the future is going to bring for the temple. So I will start the presentation by telling you that every day, I think of the silver linings that we are facing, because frankly, there are some good things that will come out of this. We know this, and after 30 days here, we realize now more and more that there will be some good things. One example of that would be the microphone and stand that Cantor Reinwald used in today's service. That's because we had to replace the whole sound system. And we haven't started even in the sanctuary, but we had to get a portable sound system. And so that has been accomplished, and that is a silver lining. So I'll probably point that out as we go, because you kind of have to, so you don't go crazy, you know? So anyway, let me start this presentation. And let's see, two of those?
Yeah.
All right. So the first is that our sanctuary building is, I'll go to the next one, the sanctuary building is uninhabitable. That's the truth of it, not just the sanctuary, the whole building. Okay, so the major losses. First of all, the kitchen. If you haven't seen it, you, well, you're going to see it in pictures, but it's all black, the entire thing. All of the appliances melted, everything. And I found out that when appliances melt, it's very toxic. And that's why it's that choking smell that you get when you go into the building. And you have to wear a mask. It's getting better. I mean, today I was in there without a mask, and it's better. It's not great. It's not safe to be in there. It's pretty bad. Structurally, five of the beams in the kitchen were compromised. And so because of that, it is a hard hat area. And so that's not safe either. Okay, so you've got it all there. The social hall, the storeroom next to the social hall, both lobbies, the lobby in the front of the building and in the foyer, the administrative offices, all total loss. All furniture, all contents. And, you know, when the restoration company comes in and starts bagging up all of these things, and then you come in, they say, well, come in and look at it. And you see a mount, really, a mountain in our sanctuary, in our social hall, that is close to ceiling height, full of stuff that is no longer any good. And so we are going to be going through that with a company and a adjuster who is helping us with contents and putting a value to all of that real muck that is in these bags. It's all still at the temple. There's a double-wide trailer in the parking lot, and so it's all in there. It's very smelly. I would not suggest that you go up there and decide to take a sniff. The rest of the contents that have been bagged up, that the restoration company believes may be salvageable, are also 500 bags. And those also were placed, the others were taken out and put in that trailer, and the others were stacked in the social hall. Those bags have been removed, and they are at our restoration company's warehouse. This next week, we will be going through every one of those bags also to assign values and to determine if anything in fact is salvageable. It's quite a sight. The roof, the roof is damaged. Above the kitchen area, the firemen, about an hour, an hour and a half after the fire was deemed to have been extinguished, the firemen themselves cut two big holes in the roof. Out came a plume of smoke. I mean, it was lighter gray, so you could tell it wasn't an active fire, but it went way up into the sky. I know some of you saw that because you called me. We thought, you know, maybe the fire had started again, rekindled. But it hadn't. It just was caught in the rafters. So when they cut the hole in the roof, it was escaping. So again, you get to see, you know, where smoke is and how destructive that is. This was right prior to all that rain that happened in the last week. And so they sent a roofer over, they patched the roof. I asked the restoration people afterwards if those roof patches held. They said to me, well, it's a little hard to tell because there's so much muck on the floor, that it's hard to tell if this is new water or old water. So we don't quite know on that. The roof, that area of roof will be replaced. We're uncertain about the rest of the roof. Much of it had damage, but we don't know on that. The HVAC system, the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system, including all the vents, most of those are totaled. All the way through the offices, those are totaled, they're lined vents. See, this is the kind of things that maybe you didn't know before, but now I know about. And so they cannot be cleaned if they're lined. But very much of that system has been removed already. And you're going to see pictures very soon, I promise. I'll stop talking, and you can see these pictures. But they're gone. And so now, the entire social hall is all rafters, that's all you see, and one-by-fours or whatever size they use in the walls and on the ceiling, that's all you see is that. And a lot of them don't look so good. I think that this was mentioned already, but the Sisterhood Gift Shop has been declared a total loss. And so when that is rebuilt, then they will have all new merchandise, as well as all new fixtures and everything that goes with the gift shop. The electrical system, this was a biggie. You know, electrical systems are made out of copper. Copper conducts heat. You guys probably have various pots and pans with copper under them. Well, those heated up, and so it has compromised the entire electrical system. So the insurance company told us right away that all computers, anything electrical, the sound system, copy machines, postage meter, everything is a total loss. It's pretty shocking. I mean, you look at a computer, it doesn't look damaged, but electrically, it is compromised. So that's gone. All new telephones, a silver lining. The temple now has brand-new telephones. I mean, it would be nice if they worked, which we're not quite to that point.
But they look really nice.
They look nice, but there is a reason why they don't work. And that is because the whole phone closet was located right outside the kitchen. And so it was compromised. All of that has been moved to the school building. It's just, you know, this week, the preschool said, well, our doorbell isn't working. And we forgot to tell him that that also needed to connect to the alarm system. So, you know, it's still in there. Voicemail, it was also mentioned that Matt Cohen was very helpful. He said, let me take over the phones. And we got all of the telephones from the temple forwarded to a voicemail system, a Google phone number. And that's been good, but it's been kind of hard to wean from that. Some of the stuff is working and some isn't. So hopefully, next week, we will have phones. Also, some of these problems with internet connectivity and telephone are because of where that closet is on the side of the building. And in addition to that, we've been waiting now for four weeks for an office trailer, a portable building, to be delivered, and it isn't there yet. And there's reasons, the city requires permits... The city requires permits and we have some landscape work to do. It's going to be located in the center of the main parking lot. And so, we have to cut down some trees to place it there. There's no other place. We had hoped to park it either where the reserved parking spots are or the handicapped parking spots, but we can't do it because it's a fire lane. And to quote the fire department at the city, they said, "You could have a fire." So, we're not going to impede that fire lane. The trucks actually need space to do a U-turn there. So, it has to go in the middle. We apologize in advance for reduced parking and for any inconvenience of where people normally would park, but that is what's going to happen. So, anyway, all of that stuff, total loss. We've had some challenges getting all the alarms up and they are all up again, so we're protected. The insurance company allowed us to hire round-the-clock guards while the alarm system was off, but it's all operational now. And we've even enhanced it with some new infrared cameras and some new laser beams that are on the roof. So, it's better. I feel a little bit better about that, but our beloved building is protected. And then, also wanted to tell you that the contents, the records, the artwork, all of that stuff has been removed and some has been started to been restored, but not all of it. Because we need to go through that and determine if we need everything because it's a big process. So, I'm sorry, I see a couple of you in the room that have called me about your accounts. Our computers are pretty much up and running, so we'll be able to answer those questions. But up until now, we have no hard copies or no computers. So, I'm sorry if you've had a question and we haven't been able to answer it. We appreciate your patience on that and we'll get, you know, everything going. Okay, so now, I'll double-click that. Okay, the damage. And we don't see anything. There we go. Okay, so, this is an early picture of the kitchen and how it looked. You can, am I blocking your view? Sorry. I'm going to then completely block the view. Okay. I'm not going to do that. How about this? Is that better? You're seeing there a picture of the former ovens. You can make those out. You can't make a lot out, but you can certainly make that out. Oops, I did you. Okay, so, I think that other one is also in the kitchen. The one that is above was our social hall. Yeah. So, now, I think that, you know, picture's worth the thousand words, right? Yeah. Okay, so, this picture was taken this morning. You can see that all the pews have been removed. We had them picked up. They went actually to the people that we ordered them from Cardinal Church Furniture. They take them apart. All the fabric and foam on those pews have been declared a total loss. They don't know about the pews yet. They, if we tell them to go ahead and start cleaning, they will. We're waiting to get some more information on them before we proceed. It's a costly deal to do it. It may be easier to replace them, we don't know yet. You can see the arc there and, you know, be able to visualize what we mean about the sheen being gone. Okay, so this is a picture today, this morning, of our social hall. So, you can see that they have cleaned up a lot of the stuff in there and they are now down just to the beams. There was a meeting that happened today between restoration, a building consultant that the insurance company uses, and Del Amo Construction, who is the construction company that we had hired recently to do our Living Legacy Campaign. More about that later. But I will say that it was a huge advantage to already have a team in place that knew our building, that have studied it, studied the plans, had a whole slew of engineers come to the property so they could, you know, evaluate what's in our property. Hazardous materials, that was studied, so we knew exactly what we dealt with. You know, old-time building codes are different than they are now. And so, we knew it in advance, so we didn't have to, you know, wait for a million people to come over. They already knew our building, so they knew how to restore it. This picture here, on the, your left side, I guess, is a picture of the pews. So, that is the bottom of a pew. You can see how discolored the smoke made the fabric. And on there, there is a rectangle. That was a service leaflet that was left accidentally on a seat. So, you can see what that looked like with that there. The center picture is a picture of the Torah scrolls. Rabbi Cohn mentioned that they pulled them out and stacked them as they unrolled them. So, you can see some of that. I don't know if you can see some of the brown at the edges. I was also horrified to learn that on some of the scrolls that are old, this is why Tora Shalom, our newest Torah scroll, made it because that ink was newer than the other Torah scrolls. And so, that ink, literally a fingernail touching it, flicked off a whole word or more. So, that is the kind of damage to those scrolls that make them both unkosher and make them in need of big repair. And on some of the older scrolls, we'll evaluate whether it is worth repairing them because this is a huge, huge process to get those words written back on the scrolls. The last picture there shows them covering up our yard site boards, which were also damaged. Any brass pits when the smoke hits it. And so, they're covering this up. All of the plaques were removed and stacked up, so, you know, we've preserved them. So, whether it is on those plaques or on another board, those names will all be replaced. That's our history. It's, you know, critical to us that all that history is maintained. So, we have records on that. The board itself has been removed because today's occurrence with the insurance company was that all the paneling and everything had to be removed because there is smoke in the, in those walls. It's hidden. And there's still some disagreement about how much further they're going to take down in the sanctuary. So, yeah. Okay, so I'm going to stop here and introduce Elaine Schwartz to come up and talk about the insurance. And if there's anything that she can't answer, I'll be happy to answer. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much. So, it's been an arduous four weeks. We are very grateful to the hard work that Susie has put in all the years that she's been executive director in maintaining a top-notch insurance policy. So, we have an insurance company, Philadelphia Insurance Company. They have been onsite from the very beginning and we have been assured that our insurance will pay to restore our facility to its pre-fire condition. Okay? Pre-fire condition is a key word here. When we're talking about our coverage, we're talking about coverage with regard to restoration of the structure plus code upgrades. So, things like the sprinkler system that's missing in the kitchen will be able to be replaced based on our coverage. We also have business interruption insurance. That means bingo, for example, that is part of our income. And there will be a negotiation and a forensic accountant that will help us evaluate what, basically predicting during the time that we are out of the facility and not being able to run a game of bingo, how much income would have been lost. But, I caution our thinking in terms of business interruption insurance, it doesn't include fundraising. So, for example, our major fundraiser that's coming up in May is critical to our budget because we don't have the ability to regain those funds in any other way and they are part of our operating budget. So, supporting our annual fundraiser is really key so that we can meet our budget for the year. So, any fundraising efforts are not covered by our insurance policy. We do have contents coverage. That means everything from books to papers to artwork to everything imaginable that we have stored in that building, chairs, tables, I mean, it's on and on and on. We do have coverage for that. But like most things, there's going to be a negotiation in terms of its value. We have, we're very fortunate. We have very, very small deductibles. So, when I say very small, it's actually $2,000 is our deductible. Thank you to Susie for that. So, that's basically negligible, not even worth talking anymore about. We have a total coverage greater than $5 million on our policy. So, we are well-equipped to be able to restore our facility to its pre-fire condition. And I'm going to just keep repeating that because we have to think, what did our facility look like before that fire? We had very old bathrooms. It doesn't pay for renovating those very old bathrooms to what we would like to say current standards or modern standards. That would be one example of where that coverage wouldn't be encompassed. The replacement and level of coverage, all of that is negotiable. Someone has to come in and assess the value of every single thing that's in that building that they've pulled out. And there'll be a massive negotiation process to be able to regain the value of all of that material. We're very fortunate, we have some tremendous professionals working with us. So, you've heard about Stuart Einbinder. He's our insurance attorney. He's also a member of our Board of Directors. He's been dealing with this since day one and we've been very fortunate to have his counsel throughout this entire process. In addition, we've engaged a public adjuster to help us with the contents, the accounting of the contents. It's such a massive job to be able to assess the value of every shred of paper, artwork, book that's in our sanctuary building. So, we do have all the appropriate consultants at our fingertips. We also have a forensic accountant that will be instrumental in being able to evaluate our business interruption. So, again, that's going through all of our accounting and assessing what we would have made or brought in in income over this period of time in which we're out of our facility. And then, there will be a gap which will have to come from temple funds. What that gap is right now, it's very difficult to say. Very difficult to say because we don't know what that negotiated amount will be with the insurance. But we do know that there are things that need to be done in that building to bring it up to a modern standard. Things that we have to do that will be outside of the scope of the pre-fire condition. That is the gap that we are trying to get our, wrap our heads around in terms of what the magnitude of that gap is. So, that's what's in process. So, who's leading the restoration effort? It's all under the direction of our Board of Directors. Of course, Susie Amster is the pivotal person. She is our Director for Restoration Operations and we are blessed to have her because she is a wealth of knowledge. We have our Living Legacy Facilities Core Committee. Now, you've heard a little bit about them along the way in this presentation, but let me educate you a little bit further. So, for the past year and a half, we have had a core group of people that have been working really diligently to plan for our future in terms of the Living Legacy Project. Now, we didn't realize that the future is actually right now. We were planning such that, you know, in a few years, we're going to break ground and we would do it when we've done our fundraising. We're taking our time, we're making all the right decisions. Great, we had the luxury of time. Now, we don't have that luxury of time. But, here's the silver lining. We had already gone through all of our interviews for architect, construction manager, and general contract for the Living Legacy Project. So, we've had their services from day one of this disaster. Having them on our side as our advocates, you can't imagine the comfort that we have felt that we didn't have to figure out who's going to draw up plans, who's going to manage this construction, who's going to evaluate what the damage is. Complete strangers. We've been working with these individuals for a year and it has been, they have been marvelous. And we are just blessed to have them on board. So, we've been really poised to take on this massive project. Unfortunately, it's accelerated what we wanted to do, but at least we're ready based on our staffing. So, we've also engaged contents restoration consultants and religious and art restoration consultants and our insurance claim consultants. So, those are the people that are involved currently and I'm sure there will be many more to come. So, what's happening right now? So, in, you've seen some of the restoration efforts, but here's the backstory. The backstory is the financial and physical assessment of the damage. So, is it restoration or is it replacement? That's a major set of questions that has to be asked for every single piece of contents in the building. Financial assessments for the insurance claim. That means assigning those values for contents losses and lost income. We haven't spoken at all about the design development, so we've had to accelerate design development and engineering for the restoration project. In order to do any restoration, we have to go to the city of Santa Ana, get permits for restoration and be able to have conducted all the engineering studies prior to starting the restoration process, the true restoration process. Right now, all they're doing is stripping down the building, but to actually go back and build what we need to build, all that is going to require permitting. And it's in the city right now because our architects have had the advantage of a little bit of time ahead to have, already had plans for drawings for that building. And now, we are just accelerating our timeline to get it into the city. So, those drawings are in the city and we're hoping to have some answers from the city soon. Then you've heard also of our temporary facilities for the temple administration. That's still been a nightmare because of the city permitting. And so, everything that we hoped to happen yesterday is not happening yesterday. So, anybody that's gone through any kind of remodeling in their home, you know the rule of thumb, I won't even say it. You know the rule of thumb in terms of time. And then, this massive assessment of what the gap is going to be between insurance and what it will take to completely restore and update our entire building. Because our objective is not to inconvenience the congregation again. We don't want to have our congregation be out of the building because we didn't fix the bathrooms at this point in time. I mean, that would be really ridiculous and also in terms of cost savings. As long as our construction people are in there, we should have all the things that need to be remodeled done right at this point if we can afford to do that. And so, that is our objective, is to meet that goal, to get that building up to the standards that we would like to have it. It's a 50-year-old building, so we have a lot of renovation that needed to be incorporated into this restoration. So, the take-home message is it's going to take time and I wish I had a set of numbers to present to you tonight. But, at least I can tell you what the tasks are that need to be accomplished and we're hoping to have some of that idea of that gap in the next month or so. So, what's our estimated timeline for restoration? For design development, engineering, and For design development, engineering, and permitting, our architects believe we can have that accomplished by June. We're hoping. We're gonna keep our fingers crossed that everything comes through just fine. But there could be delays. So when you see in big, bold letters and underline "estimated," that's what I mean. We're gonna hope. We're hoping that the construction, not just removing this and salvage, the construction we're hoping to begin in the summertime, June, July. That's actually a great time for us to be able to do that. Timing-wise, that would be wonderful. The hope, and keep your fingers crossed, the hope and a prayer, is that we're back in our sanctuary building by the first quarter of 2015. I'm not sure if that's optimistic or not, but I've been told by our very optimistic construction manager and architect that they believe that's to be so. And our fire insurance claim will be ongoing to the bitter end. So, that is our timeline for restoration, and we're hoping that we can stick to that timeline so that we don't inconvenience the congregation any further. So, thank you.
So our goal, of course, is to keep everything going, keep everything moving, and keep the congregation doing what we do best, which is to be a congregation. So just very quickly, how do we do that? Keeping our temple operations and programming going? Well, welcome here. Our religious services, b'nai mitzvot, confirmation, we have been the wandering Jews of TBS, but I'm happy to say we're home. We're home here at the LDS Center, and we'll be here for our duration, and we're so grateful to them for this wonderful gift. Our social hall celebrations and events, all of the events in the social hall have been moved to other locations. The French-American school classes have resumed. So as soon as the power was back on, they were back in the classroom and they're learning once again. Mitzvah meals, thank God for halas, and parties by panache. They are all cooking in an industrial kitchen and having way too much fun. So go and join them. Sign up for mitzvah meals. Go and cook in an amazing kitchen, and go and continue to serve those who are hungry. It's a great mitzvah for us to do, no matter where we are. Religious school, preschool, adult education, all of our classes are taking place in the Religious School Building. Again, if you don't know where that class is, there'll be a sign right there in the front every single day that tells you which rooms all the classes are and programs are. Camp Shalom, registration went out today. Please, sign your children up, your grandchildren, your nieces, your nephews, heck, sign up the kid next door. I don't care, get them to Camp Shalom. Stacy just left. Stacy Silverman is our Camp Shalom director. She is amazing. So, she has Jack and Izzy, they're the mascots of Camp Shalom. They're cute. So, Camp Shalom will be going and having a great time this summer, so there's no interruption of programming. Sisterhood and Brotherhood events are happening. They have been making some wonderful changes and relocations, but also playing with the locations that we have. So we're grateful for everything that they've been doing. And as you already heard about Bingo, it's on hiatus, and we have the lost revenue that's covered by Business Interruption Insurance. But as Elaine said, please understand that when it comes to fundraising, fundraising is not covered by insurance. Come to the event on May 3rd. The fundraiser, the annual fundraiser does not go to the Fire Fund, the annual fundraiser goes to our operational fund. While yes, we need to be, you know, working strongly on our Fire Fund, we also need to continue to ensure that our operational budget is also sound. So, please come and join us on May 3rd for that awesome event at TBS. So how can we all help? We all can help by bringing our community together. Being together, this is the greatest gift of all. This is the one thing that truly helps all of us. Volunteer time on committees, there's a lot of work to be done. Please volunteer time. If you have an expertise, please let us know. I wanna say a very special thank you to somebody who hasn't been thanked yet, but Peter Michelson. He makes us sound good. He, better than a vocal coach, he provides sound systems. So, it's cool, he can auto-tune me. We've got, we've got also, supporting all of our Temple Beth Shalom events. Sign up for events, sign up for adult education, sign up for fundraisers, sign up for all the events that are happening. Be a participant, enjoy it. Donate to the Fire Restoration Fund. This is critical. We can't do this without capital. We need to all be coming together. We have a gap that we're going to have to fill. From not only what we have already raised in Living Legacy, not only what we will receive from the insurance company, but there's going to be a gap that we are going to have to fill in order to fulfill the entire dream of making our entire campus whole again. So, please, participate. Donate to the Fire Restoration Fund. If you have an idea for a fundraiser and you want to take that on, please understand that we as a staff, we're very stretched at the moment. But if you are willing to put together a small committee and do a fundraiser, I mean Rib Trader, you know, Gene Lesman has been talking about, they're gonna do some kind of fundraiser over at the Rib Trader. You know, there's all sorts of different kinds of ideas that are going on. So, please, however we can do it, let's do it together. Finally, our Talmud teaches us, "As my ancestors planted for me, I plant now for my children and my children's children." So we invite you to donate today to our Fire Recovery Fund. That button is on the front page of our website. If you have family, if you have friends who are going, "What can we do?", www.tbsoc.com. Call the Temple Office, the phones will be working eventually, I promise. But in the meantime, leave a message. And honestly, your generosity of your time, your talent, your treasure is greatly appreciated. So with that, I say thank you to everyone for all of that. So now we wanna hear from you, and with questions, and we're all here, and also, so if, Marla, if people need, you know, if you wanna have a private question that you don't want necessarily, I am going to just start on this side, and I'm just gonna go around, okay? So, Corinne, go ahead.
Hi, did you hear what Debi Freeman's piano?
Ah, thank you. The piano, Debi Freeman's piano was taken out almost immediately, and they, it's been taken to the restoration company. They said pianos have gone through far worse, and they're fairly confident that it's going to be just fine. I've been talking to Cheryl Friedman, always good. So, thanks. Donna?
The memorial plaques.
The memorial plaques have all been collected, taken off of, thank you all, I know that you have to go, thank you all so much. The memorial plaques have all been collected, they're with the restoration company. We haven't, you know, there's no decision yet as to how those boards will be redone, as was mentioned earlier from Suzie. That bronze, that the plaques, the, the boards, thank you, the boards are on, thank you for interpretation, is, those were damaged, so we're gonna have to see where those will go. But we have the actual plaques. All right? So, Sylvia?
I have two questions. The donor wall that was on the right side of the sanctuary?
Torahat Shalom. Unfortunately, chances, it's been taken down and it's black. Thank you, hi Jeff. It's plastic. So, it's plastic, so it's, yeah. But we've got the names.
How about the tiles on the inside of the doors?
On the inside of the doors, the glass of the inside of the doors, the doors have been removed, those are also going to the restoration company. Really quickly, explain pre-fire condition with regards to replacement costs. Did our insurance policy have replacement costs? Yes. Yes, it did. Is that a good enough answer? Okay. Charles?
What about the Megillah?
The Megillah, I also, the Megillah I also have, it was in a case, and it's actually in good shape. So the Megillah and its yad, which is also a grogger, are all good. So, I'll bring them tomorrow night. Thank you for reminding me. Jackie?
What about the plaques on the backs of the pews?
The plaques that were on the back of the pews, all of those, and there, also, by the way, did you know, there were plaques that were on the back of the chairs? The big uncomfortable tall chairs? Tarn, I'm sorry, that's silver lining. Yes. No, I don't. Oh, like-for-like, no. But the plaques have all been removed, we have the plaques, so we're keeping records of all those. By the way, the memorial wall that was outside in the lobby, we've taken pictures of that, so we see it. Quick, really fast note, what was interesting was right after the fire, the heat was so intense, that's a marble wall, the marble wall, you know, that was hot in there, it cooled, and then it was black, and then there's streaks down it, it looked like the wall was crying. Yeah. I have a picture of it, I'll have to pull it out for you to see. It's really, it was really amazing. But we took pictures of that, so we have, all the names have been preserved with that. Patricia?
Remember that we had a chuppah which was behind?
The, right.
Was it? Were there any of them? There were various objects, were any of them?
The chuppah and everything back there have been taken to restoration. We'll have to see if it can be restored and cleaned. So that's, we're still waiting. Everything's been taken to restoration. We haven't gotten it back yet. So. And we have nowhere to put it, too. What? I'm sorry? It's a possibility. It's a, I know, because it's gorgeous. Yeah. Yeah, it's absolutely gorgeous. Norman?
Construction projects are notorious for going over budget, not because of upgrades, but just because what you estimate to begin with, just, if we're looking at exactly the same, when you start to have to do it, you find it's greater, greater cost. How does that happen?
So, go for it, Jeff?
So I think that one of the best pieces of advice that we got at the very beginning of this project was around the area of advocacy. So we're not directly going out and just hiring a construction company. Very early in the project, we hired a construction manager. And a construction manager has absolutely nothing to do with the construction per se. His company is not directly involved, but he essentially acts as our advocate. And he has done a great job, even just through the estimating process, in identifying opportunities to take unnecessary cost out. So we have every hope that he will continue throughout the entire process. Now, are there going to be surprises? I suspect, of course there, almost by definition, but I think that the structure, the team structure that we've set up puts us in a very good situation in terms of trying to control the number of those surprises and the magnitude of them.
Jeff has said he's one of the insurance companies. He has attended the insurance.
Yeah, so Richard Lewis is the gentleman I'm speaking of, and he has literally been involved in every step of this entire process, meeting with the insurance companies at every single meeting.
Also, just that, asking our congregants, donate, if you have extra High Holiday Prayer books, bring them with also for the High Holidays. So thank you for whoever sent that message to us. Gene, yes?
I have a contact at the Orange County Register, who does, helps for non-profit organizations to fundraising, and promote fundraising.
Great. Call him.
He's really working with us.
Yes.
At the Rib Trader.
Great.
And also any other fundraising event for the Fire Restoration Fund. Now we need to let Nina, so I can get in touch with her, and we can have this in the Orange County Register and a few other places of special media.
Perfect. Thank you so much, and also Linda Weisberg will help with us, too. But, Marla, since you have the paper right there, will you just write that down, please? Gene Lesman for a contact, Orange County Register for fundraising. Thank you. I'll let you be my secretary, yes.
Yeah, it's a blanket cap. It's a, yeah, blanket coverage, it's the cap. So, the top with it, yes.
Wait.
No, 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 we're hoping for less. Yeah. Thank you.
That's the gap.
Yeah, that's the gap.
I'm a little worried about the health of the staff, the working day, and this is the sound, I mean, seriously, I'm just, from the sound, it's getting quite, I mean, you guys are watching, and now just sort of, and, no one's talking about that cost, and I think that's something.
Thank you for being concerned with our health, we greatly appreciate that, definitely. And Suzie's been definitely talking non-stop. We haven't been sitting in that building a lot, we try to stay out of it as much as we possibly can now. But thank you, yeah. And it's also, it is, we recognize, it's definitely a lot of time, and.
And my backseat is full of masks and gloves.
And your backseat is full of masks and gloves.
Can I say something? Yeah, I know I'm speaking out of turn, but I think we do need to take care of them. We're in the crisis mode still, but I think once we get out of the crisis mode, we'll have to allow them some time off to rejuvenate, and, and, we just haven't gotten to that point.
I'm beach on Maui.
We're going to Maui. Lisa, yeah.
So let me, like.
Yes.
Take Living Legacy?
Sure, and I don't have the, was it number 3.7?
Yeah, 3.7.
Yeah, so, so far the campaign has raised about $3.7 million. If you're, some of you may have been in some discussions previously that, you know, indicated that we believe that the overall project that we were attempting to take on would probably cost somewhere in the $7 to $8 million range, totally. Now, while we recognize there are some synergies here with what is that we're rebuilding, and of course we intend to rebuild in accordance with those new plans, this clearly adds some additional costs that we did not anticipate, and like was mentioned earlier, totally turns on its ear what the planning approach is and what the timeline would have been for the original project. So.
And actually, I'm gonna give an update on that one, because we got word of two different donations today. We're actually at $4.3 million. So we're very happy about that. So, Irv?
At first glance, it looks like we're covered by insurance, with this entire restoration again, we want to create a fire restoration fund.
Yeah.
So, you don't look at that too deeply, it doesn't make any sense.
Okay, let me see if I can shed some light. So, again, let's reflect on what is the Living Legacy Committee, the Core Design Committee has been trying to do. It's taken the last year and a half to look at the entire campus and look to make improvements to the fundamental campus design to provide a more integrated campus, to improve the way people flow through the campus, to improve the facilities, to provide a better education facility, to provide better administrative space, better space for the rabbi encounter, et cetera. And, at the same time, offer up some operational efficiencies to allow our staff to work better together. Now, what was mentioned earlier is that insurance will allow us to reconstruct what was there before. What we think makes the most sense is to take into consideration these new plans that we have in place, and whatever we rebuild, we rebuild in accordance with the new plans. Any difference between rebuilding what we had and building what we need in accordance with this Living Legacy campaign is the gap. So that's what insurance will not pay for, that's what we're gonna have to raise funds for, and that's why we've set up this Fire Fund. Does that help?
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, John?
When are you gonna be able to see the new plans?
So, this is the exciting stuff, because if you look at where we were in the process, we were just finishing up what we call the schematic design, and we were beginning to look at developing detailed plans as of just several weeks ago. We saw the first three-dimensional renderings of the space. I don't think that those are quite ready, at least I haven't seen them, but they're almost ready. So I wish I had them this evening to show, to show to you. It's actually very exciting because it takes the space that you know, and through fairly minor transformations, makes it into a very different, much more usable space. So I think I can speak on behalf of the rest of our committee, we're very excited in what we are about to show you, and I wish I had it tonight, but we don't.
Yes.
So, the restoration is gonna be separated from the remodel, but we'll restore with the remodel in mind? Or are we gonna go for it and just try to do it all in one fell swoop? Or are we going to go for it and just try to do it all in one fell swoop?
We're going for it. Because otherwise, if we try to restore, then, if, if you do restoration and then you go for remodel, then you have to do, you have to close all over again and do all that, so it's like, that, we're, we're going forward now.
The timeline of, you know, first quarter-ish, 2015 is.
No, that's, that would, so, that will be the sanctuary building, and then, and then we then go to work on the school building and administrative offices. So, yeah, we, we flipped it, because it was originally going to be, that, the, the first phase was going to be the religious school, administrative offices, putting those now on the front, and then working on the sanctuary social hall building. Obviously now, we have to flip that. So our goal is to do the whole thing at once, so, yeah.
Let's use an example, let's say you had a, like, a major leak in your bathroom shower, right? Now, you can either kind of tear out the shower and retar it and rebuild it exactly the way it was, or if you were thinking, gee, I was going to remodel my bathroom anyway, and kind of expand the shower and put in new cabinets, and you wouldn't do it twice. And, and, and that's exactly why we're saying we, we want to go for it and gain whatever efficiencies, whatever financial efficiencies we can through this process. So again, we try to recognize the silver lining here, if we can.
Yes. Will you be able to go inside the building? Right now, it's not safe. It's for us to take, you know, especially take kids and take, you know, large groups into, but I will take lots of pictures, and I will show them to you. Yes. Go for it. You don't have to wear a special series of people.
That's a great question, no, we don't, we don't, but, the restoration people who are working, they are wearing special white suits, but they're not like the way with heavy duty things, it's more just protecting their clothing. So, yes, so they're wearing those suits, and they're wearing masks as well for their breathing too, because they're taking everything off the ceilings and stuff. Great questions, thank you. Yes, Sharon?
The 4.3 million that you mentioned.
Yes.
Is that entire, entire amount, you know, toward the school, and is any of that used for sanctuary?
Any of that used for sanctuary? Jeff, there you go.
So, when I talked earlier about the seven to eight million dollars for the entire project, the majority of that spend would have been on the school building only because there was more work to do there, but there was work on every part of the campus, the parking lot, the outdoor space, we were looking at, at constructing, we are looking at constructing a community pavilion, an entirely new administrative space, space that integrates what are now totally disparate spaces across the, the campus. So we have duplicate staff not being able to connect with each other, so it's an entirely new design. So, there was going to be spend everywhere, but like we said earlier, the, the phasing was going to be different, the timing was going to be different, so we had thought that most of the initial work rather would be on the school building, and then the sanctuary work would come second. But there was definitely some, some measure of significant rework in the sanctuary, as part of the original plan.
On the same subject, I wanted to add something else, and that is that not all of that money is received, because many of these gifts came in the form of pledges. So we have a, a nice sum of money that we've collected, but not nearly all of it, so that's not even available to consider at this point. Also, we spent money. You know, we've hired some of these trades, they've drawn up plans, we've asked for permits, so not all that money is available to use toward this project anyway. Food for thought.
Michelle? I'll come back.
So, in terms of, did I believe all of the, so, some of the things you might have now, which you're all going to be.
No.
No.
Some of the, the, uh, the rental of the social hall is.
Yeah, the rent, the rental of the, the rental of the social hall is, so, you know, I mean, the b'nai mitzvah fee of the training and everything is still happening, but as far as the rental of the social hall, yes, that is all covered, and that's, and that's all being handled through insurance and through Suzie.
And those restoration funds, are you covering?
Yes, yeah. So Pam?
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry, yes, whoa, 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 oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I heard yes over here, sorry.
That, the, the money that is slated to be part of the operational budget, still has to be part of the operational budget. So rentals are part of our operational budget, so that would need to cover, otherwise we can't pay our staff or have our doors open. So operationally, rental income would go back into the operational budget, it would not be part of the restoration, okay?
Sorry, yeah, great, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go to Pam, and then I'm going to go back over to Barbara, Pam.
So, curious in terms of membership and membership growth, is helping more challenging to grow members when we're in different places, and I'm just wondering what our thoughts and plans are, for all of this to truly transpire in the future.
So the question has to do with membership, I have to tell you, I had, I had two phone calls last week of two incoming new member families that are coming to join us, so we're really excited about that. They have children also who are going to go into the religious school, so they're going to be touring. You know, we might be out of our building, but we're still a congregation. So absolutely, we are doing, you know, membership drives, please continue to invite your people to come, you know, especially, don't forget, you, we've got nearly 80% of Orange County Jews are unaffiliated to any congregation at all. So we want to, you know, definitely encourage membership, we're excited about these two new families who are coming, and, and we'll keep building our membership as well. So is that answer? Okay, great. Barbara, yes, go for it.
Unfortunately, I'm kind of a fire expert.
Okay.
We were homeless for 16 months and five days. One of the things I know is, with replacement value insurance, you have a certain amount of flexibility in what you replace, what you have with, you can do a lot of upgrading with replacement value insurance, they'll cover. And the goal of your public adjuster, the goal of our public adjuster, was to get us every single dollar of our coverage, and he did. So, handle it right, and you'll be in better shape than soon if you make it, you're going to be.
Barbara? Your public adjuster is now T'olat Shalom's public adjuster. Hired, seriously, hired, so thank you for the recommendation, it's a very good match. Thank you.
There you go. Excellent. All right, Fran?
Unless I missed it somewhere.
Yes.
I'm not aware of the congregation as a whole per se, having had town hall meetings like this, or whatever, and having had new plans presented themselves.
No, it hasn't happened, because it had, because prior to, prior to the fire, we were in what was called the major donor phase. Major donor phase was taking the concept, the, the concept, which by the way, many of our major donors, when they initiated their pledges, hadn't even seen any kind of drawings, only heard about the vision. And so, the, the drawings, the schematic designs and so, and so forth, were just in process, and this was part of the major donor phase first. So now, yes, we're accelerating this at this time.
So my next question is, is this a fatality, or is there not even the opportunity for discussion and possible suggestions if congregants are not overly happy? We're asking for two, two separate parts of donations now, and we're asking for congregants to come together and help two funds, and how is this going to work if they don't have some input? I've been through this twice, and I know what the response and the reaction is, and I'm, I'm asking.
Fran, I would be happy to take a lot of this offline, but do know that we've had a master planning process going on in this temple for almost 10 years. Yeah, a little over 10 years. And so because of that, many, many congregants, 125 congregants, attended the town hall meeting to discuss that. So the, the way it is designed is that a core committee, because we couldn't ask, you know, 600 families to be involved in the, the open concept of the campus. So it's been in a committee forum, and now we're just getting schematics. So the actual design of what everything is going to look like is still to come, and I'm happy to tell you that some of the drawings and the schematics are going to be available for viewing. We're going to get that portable office, and we think there'll be room for those to be displayed in there. Yeah, the renderings, it's some really, really excellent illuminations of what the campus could look like.
Can I tag on? Go. So Fran, I'm not sure that, that you got your question totally answered there yet, excuse me. But when we say we've had a master planning process in place for, since 2001, it was in gathering the information from the congregation about what the congregation wanted our vision to be. And that information that was gathered is what has, has been the foundation for now what is a basic layout of the, of the buildings. It's not even at the point where you can have design even part of the question, it is only simply placement of, of functions. That's the stage that we're really at, so we're really very, very preliminary. The good news is, with the sanctuary building, all that was slated to happen was basically remodeling and restoring the, the sanctuary building to be modernized, to take care of things like HVAC, which is our air conditioning system, which is really poor, to replace our sound system. All those things we gathered through focus groups, and our congregants told us that we need these things to be replaced to modernize our building. So with regard to the sanctuary building, very little structural is slated to happen there. It's not like what is slated to happen with admin or school building, all those are major restoration, and we haven't even gotten to the point where we are in the design phase yet. So just realize that everybody's input from the congregation over this many committees, there have been multiple, multiple committees, that have contributed to the process, that information is what formed the foundation for now what is the schematic layout of the entire campus, but we haven't actually done the design. Jeff, did you want to tag on?
Yeah, I just want to add one other thing that you may not be aware of, but within the last six months, the schematics, before they were finished, were presented to the sisterhood board, in which there was part of it of input, which was followed by a very generous gift pledge.
Right. So we're still even gathering information from all the stakeholders. Every member of the, of the staff has been interviewed, we're about to interview sisterhood for their input, so we still are, you know, we were supposed to do this in a year from now, not right now, so that's, we've, we're kind of compressing that timeline, but a lot of the foundation was already done in committee, and we thank everybody who participated in that process, because it really, you will see, will resonate when you see the plans. I wish we had them tonight.
Um, Hetty?
Um, you talked about 2015 as the finish date, approximately, is that just for the social hall?
For the sanctuary building.
Sanctuary building.
Right.
Now, you talked about the eighth, needing eight million to use the entire project, but you're not going to start any of that until the end of the school?
Until we have the money.
Okay, everybody, great check.
Yay! I love you, Hetty.
If you think about the process for just a second, this whole concept of schematic design is largely around figuring out how much it costs to build something. So, step back and, and think, well, gee, how, how do you know how much money you can raise? How much money do you think you need to raise? What is it that you want to build? You have to start someplace. So you take all the information, you come up with a schematic design, you get the, the architects and the construction people to price it, and then you say, well, do I think I can actually raise that amount of money? It's this very interesting dance, where you sort of go round and round and round for months and months and months, until you sort of settle in on what you think you can do. But the, the fundamental principle, the guiding principle all along the way, has always been that we would not build something that we didn't have money to build.
Jean? Thank you.
Going to be fundraising with the bingo games, a lot of merchants were solicited to advertise on bingo cards. Bingles aren't going on for a year, but is that funding that we invested into advertising for our businesses going to be put up till bingo? It's net out.
I, 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 I mean, I, my first disclaimer is that I'm not an insurance person, but I'll tell you my understanding, and please y'all.
Wait.
The bingo advertising is done from bingo lingo, returns our programs, and they give us our programs for free and fair, they don't, it's not, we don't solicit, they solicit and just print the program.
So the reimbursement, the reimbursement here is just simply around business loss, it's whatever net we would get at the end of the day, the forensic accountants are going to figure all that out, and that's what the reimbursement should be.
Okay. Yes, Hetty?
Do we have any opportunity to use the facility here for fundraisers?
For fund, well, not, not for bingo.
No, not bingo.
Depending, okay, good. Depending on what it is, and the dates and so forth, yes. So, yeah, so we, I mean, that's, that's been the wonderful thing, is that they've been working with us, and there are certain, you know, guidelines and restrictions, and I would love to talk offline with that too. If you've got ideas, bring them on, this would be good. Also, University synagogue has really opened their doors for, for that as well, for having us use their facilities, a lot of the congregations throughout have as well. I know lots of people are leaving, so I want to say thank you to everybody, if you still have questions, feel free, ask us. I'm going to ask a huge favor, please, we need to always leave this place as we find it, which means we need to clean up before we leave. Please do not leave any prayer books, any papers, anything like that, on the floors or on the pews, our moms are not coming to clean up after us. So, thank you so very much. Shabbat shalom, everybody. If you need anything, have any questions, call us, let us know.